All right, welcome to the Town Act and Planning Board for Thursday, June 2nd, 2022 at 6:00 PM. Well, I'll stand for the pledge.
Pledge of the Statute of the United States of America into the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, rule by law, and justice for all.
Did everybody get a chance to?
No, I didn't. Sorry. We have to wait for Gavin anyway.
For the minutes. Yeah, he's here anyways now, so.
We just see one typo. Receding. The last page.
Oh, I. Oh, I think. I think on the first page, first paragraph under Martinez. Uh, 1, 2, third sentence, food truck area. It should be a period after construction for the shop hasn't started, period. And then next phrase for traffic control is a separate issue, separate. In other words, the construction isn't for traffic control.
Right.
So perhaps if you capitalize the F. Period after started, capitalize the F. Um, on the next page, top of the page, the board does not issue. This board does not issue a mass gathering permit. It's by the selectmen. So the select board, I guess, or. And we don't want a new plan draft. We want the final with the conditions outlined.
Think I'd some updated. Change around, right?
Yeah, I would say the planning board will like the final plan updated with the, the identified conditions. And those two conditions were actually three with the acoustic thing.
There should be a list of them on there, right?
Yeah, there's like two of them. The Saturday, Sunday hours. And to repaint the parking lines and install internal signage. That was one. Outdoor Entertainment Limited Saturdays and Sundays between 1:00 and 5:00 was two. And then that we added at the meeting, the acoustic thing.
For the bike week. And he said he was looking into changing that light, the way it was shining for the road. Do you remember?
I think he just said, yeah, I don't know if anything came about it. I can't quite remember. Um, but I know. Yeah.
We'll just let him know.
Yeah.
Like if he just, like I said, puts it down more.
Yeah, it doesn't have to be a condition. That's more of a, you need to do this because that you're not allowed to do it.
We say anything about Jones, Kenyon's, uh, receding slopes side into the garage. He said he was going to take care of the back too. Wasn't that part of it?
Yeah, side and back of the garage. It's a spelling typo as well. Now, what, I don't remember the condition on waste oil disposal. He had to show us, prove to us.
He's going to contact, uh, Safety Clean or Clean Harbor, um, and show us with a contract for pickup. The waste oil was more or less, um, somebody he knew was taking it to burn at their facility.
But it was mostly just what, uh, antifreeze.
Antifreeze, any kind of, um, hazardous material that they pick up.
Yeah, I think the problem with him getting receipt was he just doesn't produce enough to have it come out all the time.
Well, you still get a contract. You can still get a contract with them saying that we will, we are servicing your shop.
Right. Even at no cost.
Right.
Or he pays and whatever it is.
I s- right. And so that's kind of what I had sent over to him and, um, Mr. Demers so that they could. So on this, I know we were jumping around, but at the end of the thing, I was just going to give that, this is what they came up with. So you can review it at the, you know, just to make sure it's okay. So when they come in. With their site plan. Or did I have it? I'll show it to you after, when we're all said and done.
What did we jump to there?
Nothing. Don't just forget I even said anything. Just, I just made you dumber.
The site plan for John Kenyon, right? I was there. I followed him on that. It goes under our pending projects.
Yeah, I don't know. Well, I know we did the receipt. I went over the receipt and the slopes were the same thing, so I don't, I don't know what happened.
What about the back?
No, I had gone through and done a bunch of corrections, but she said that she fixed it, but for some reason it didn't. It must not have saved and then she reprinted it.
Did you get the changes or?
You can make the changes and you can review them again next week if you want, or you can just, she hasn't written down.
All right. Motion the table.
Is that what we do?
Yeah.
If you want, if you don't want to do it today, then you just, we'll just fix them and then you guys can reprove them next week if you want, or we can.
Yeah, let's do that.
Okay.
So do we need a motion?
Yeah.
Uh, I move that we table the meeting, uh, meeting minutes of May 19th, Thursday, um, for corrections to be made.
Yep. My second?
Hold on, Pierre. All right. New business, uh, Bill Wood, 35 Oriole Road, lot 138-019, greatest practical estate.
You want this to start here for you? You want to go with the plan? Or pictures or?
If you, I sent the bundle PDF to you. That would be ideal if you had that.
It's 1, 6. Oh, I just, I did everything.
Well, good evening. Is that on? Um, my name is Chris Delano and I'm representing, uh, Bill and Nancy Wood, uh, today, uh, for 35 Oriole Road on Wilson Lake. And we're, uh, I have a, uh, series of slides here that maybe I'll go through that outlines the project. Uh, first one right now is the kind of approach elevation you're about on the, this is the south. Oh, what is it? South, uh, east. It's not southeast, it's southwest corner of the property, uh, looking towards the lake. On the right side is the existing camp and a waterside deck. Goes fast. And summer, summertime view, you're moving a little bit closer to the lake. On your right is the existing camp, uh, with the waterside deck. Uh, we're proposing to take down that existing camp. The front edge of it is about 13 feet from the waterside and back edge, I think, is about 35 feet or so. Next slide. This is the site plan of it. Uh, the lower right hand, kind of, there's three colors on there. Those are the three major players on the property, uh, the existing camp, which we're proposing to take down and capture the existing floor plan, footprint, floor area and volume. And we're planning to remove that entirely and then move it back. Then the, another area is that garage, uh, towards the back. Uh, we have a 50-foot setback that is required from the center line of that right-of-way, uh, which really, if you were to offset that 50-foot line and you were to offset the 100-foot line from the water, you wouldn't have any goldable area there. We are looking to use that garage as our grandfathered setback off that center line of right-of-way. Uh, so that's shown. The other kind of bright green is an existing three-bedroom septic field. Uh, also at the top of that lot, which is colored differently, is a, uh, the Woods have recently purchased that land, so now it's all one property. So we're going to be capturing kind of that, uh, additional area, which brings us to, I think, 20,800 square feet for a lot area. Can you go to the next slide? So this is what we're, what we're proposing. Uh, again, capturing that 30% of increase in volume and floor area by removing that existing camp, which is right by the water, really moving it as far back as is feasible with that existing garage that's 34 and a half feet from that front, uh, right-of-way. We're looking to put a two-story volume kind of in that channel. So it's about 16 feet wide, so it's fairly narrow, but we're trying to push as much of the building as far back as we can and to avoid the existing leach field. So there's that two-bedroom volume that is behind the 100-foot line and forward of that, what is the 34 and a half foot line? And then up to the upper right, uh, is a one-story living area that we're proposing, uh, that stretches closer to the lake, um, captures view, captures southern sun. Uh, and then there's an existing, and then there's a, a new deck that's also planned. And you can see the dimensions that are shown. Those are dimensions from the water's edge. Uh, one, couple, couple things I think are important to note is by removing that existing camp, uh, we now have an opportunity to, to vegetate that, that area. You also see a dotted blue line with an arrow, which is shown as, right now, that's, that's where a bulk water comes down Oriole Road and enters onto the site and in heavy rains kind of continues onto the water. Obviously, that's not something we want to keep there, so proposing some vegetation kind of to reclaim the area around the existing camp. Obviously, we're required to do, do that for shoreland, but in organizing that and locating it, it will, you know, be that filter for that stormwater, so with that. With a goal of, of kind of preventing that water from getting to the lake. You see the, uh, as you kind of go through these tags, the one-story living area is looking to have a shed roof so that we can push water to the back of the property. And again, plantings back there, which will work to filter that rainwater. In this plan and in the calculations that you have, there's also, they want to keep their existing, uh, deck that's on the water because, you know, what a beautiful place to be in the morning. Um, but in our calculations, we've, uh, are, that's fits within our, uh, expanded volume and area.
Which is where?
Right down here. It's, it's currently, it's still there. It's currently there, but. So you subtracted this, this is just from my knowledge, you subtracted that from the numbers that you had originally because you, so you had it in there because you wouldn't take it away.
Because, yes, that's right.
Now you took it out of that, of that, that calculation?
Correct.
Okay, correct. I just wanted to clarify for myself.
So it's going away?
No, they're looking to keep this, but remove the structure that was in this dotted line, I guess.
Okay, but it's going to be in the calculation?
That is not in the, that's what I was just asking him. It's not going to be in his 30% calculation. Cause he can't, he's not removing the structure, so it doesn't add.
Correct.
Correct. That's what I'm verifying from, for my office, so that I know what numbers I'm looking at. That is no longer in the calculation.
Why?
Because he's not removing it. If he was to remove the structure, then he can add that footage to his volume, his square footage. But since he's not asking to, since he's not looking to remove it, then it doesn't go into his calculations. It doesn't, it's not an addition to his 30%.
So it doesn't include, it's not included in lot coverage?
It's in the calculation of what constitutes up to 30%.
If he's not removing it, no, he doesn't get to use that volume. That calc, that add, that additional 30%. If he removed it, it gets added to the structure that they're proposing up here.
But it's, it's got to be part of the total. When you determine that he's under 30%.
So.
That's confusing.
Yeah, it is confusing. So, um, if you go two more slides, I think.
I just had a question, if you want to go back to that for a second. I, I, I'm not, I don't, I don't, I'm sorry, I'm missing some. I don't process everything I hear.
Sure.
Um, and you said two-story. There was a portion of that building that is story.
Correct.
So you use the existing garage and go up on top of that? Is that?
We are not using the existing garage. We're taking down that garage that's behind the 100-foot line. But right now is a structure that we're hoping, uh, would allow us to build in that, that area because of that garage.
So that's going to be two-story on this section next to the leach field?
Right here.
Correct, yes.
Now, is this a road?
This is a right-of-way that goes to, um, this, it literally, it stops right here.
So is there anybody across the street?
It's woods. It's, it's, it's owned by a prop person, obviously, but it's just wooded area.
But you wouldn't be blocking anybody's view with a two-story building?
No, and that doesn't matter anyway. He's up to 30, he's allowed up to 35 feet.
What's the roof going to be like on the two-story section?
A little bit undetermined at this point. Uh, I, we've shown a number, a number of roof options as our, as our starting design. Uh, right now, if we go to that next slide.
I have one downstairs I can go grab.
Oh, there we go. This is going to help me. So this is that two-story volume. This is that low volume. This is a shed roof going, putting water here. This, right now, we're looking at a few options, but right, the one on the table is a shed roof, well, there's a gable, except it's running the different way. Putting, and the peak would be here. Bulk water running down into this area again for same reason as, as that. Now, just to clarify that, uh, calculation, I think if, uh, maybe.
Two more slides, we have that.
So the way that we calculated that, which I think is the, will help us in clarification, is we use the existing area of the camp. We use the existing area of the deck as our starting point. So that's in the, in the numbers here. And then we got a 30% number, which is that number there, which is 1,940. And so that's our, that's our square footage number. That includes the waterfront deck. That's our volume that, you know, doesn't include the deck because it doesn't have volume to it. But then we subtracted this existing decks here, so that's the waterfront deck that we're keeping. And this is the area that we're proposing for, forward of the 100-foot line. And then we're adding both of those together to get this number. And now, look down here, we're 87% of our way to that allowable area and volume.
So, so you are using it?
No, he's subtracting. No, he's not using, you can't use the 30% of that deck if he's not removing that deck from the current location.
But it has to be in the total calculation. That's what he's done. He's added it to the 1,400.
But then he subtracted, but then he subtracted it here.
No, that's, look, it adds. Look at the column. It's addition. It has to be in the calculation.
But you don't get a 30%, you don't, what I was asking is you're not taking that 30% of that 251. So 250, so if it was 251, you would add 30% to the 251 being like 280 or whatever it is, 300?
We are, because it's an existing.
You, but if you're not removing it, you can't do that. You have to remove the deck to get the 30%. That was what my question was, and I'm sorry, John, for, so in order to, to remove this and I couldn't. Am I wrong with this one, Joe? I'm only asking you because you dealt.
If you have an existing camp that we were keeping, we, we would first of all do the base calculation of what you have forward of that 100-foot line. And then you would work from there to understand if you're keeping some of that, you can only add that 30% to it. This is a different scenario where we're removing a portion of it, but we're still keeping that. So I feel that it, it, it is part of the base calculation. It just gets subtracted out again. It gets added and then it gets subtracted out again because it's existing. At least that's, that's how I've always done it with, with.
We, surely we're subtracting it out in the calculation.
This is a number that includes several other stoops and small little decks that are being removed, which is why there's that number that's, these two don't, don't align because this is just the waterfront portion of the decks, whereas this is the rest of them. Actually, you know what?
Subtracted it from the 372 to get the 251.
Do you mind jumping back one?
The other decks are smaller.
So this may, hopefully, hopefully this helps us. Uh, this was the existing calculations that, that we had of the, of the existing features of the camp that exists right now. So first level, 816, there's a loft in there, 300, side exit landing of 36 square feet, front entry landing of 16, side of 69, waterfront deck of 251. That equals out here. And then we had the 30% expansion from all of those existing features. This was the volume side of that. So that allows us that 1,900. And then kind of we took that area and we did the new plan area. This is all just forward of the 100-foot line. And we have the 1679, which includes new decks. And then here's the existing waterside deck, which is that 251. Uh, and that gives us that, that final number, which is, you know, still less than that.
Yeah.
Does that seem?
I get that.
Okay.
I don't get what Jason is saying.
I may have misspoke when I agreed with, with a, a portion of, of the details of that. Cause there is, uh, when I went through these calculations, I, I, it seemed a little odd to add something and then take it away. But that's how, you know, that's how the shoreline works with capturing all that you have. And you don't, if you're not, many times, we're just adding 30%, so we're keeping a portion of that, but we still use it in the base calculations.
I'm okay with that explanation. I just can't follow Jason's.
I'm fine. I'm doing a good job confusing people today.
That's why.
Yes.
So you add it back in to, to, to probably 30% of your square footage that I'm knowing what the deck is. That's why it's part of that original calculation.
You good?
I am.
No, I'm just reading some, I'm just.
Okay.
Where are we going?
Yeah, so these are some, some more detailed plans. Really, uh, I think maybe we land on that site plan because that kind of shows the whole story.
Go down?
Uh, yeah, back three or four. Yeah, that's right. And so now, uh, um, that's the end of what I have to say. If there's any questions, I'd love to get through them.
And the, uh, septic is relatively new, as I glance through that?
It is.
2017, 70s.
2018.
What's the distance from, um, the new deck to the water?
Is that 60 feet?
60 feet. Oh, that's a corner of the building?
Actually, that's a corner of the building. I think it's 44 feet.
So it's 20 inches to the water table there? Is that what we have? So you're not having a full basement? So you're having four-foot frost wall?
Um, probably goes in for the mat, for the utilities.
So what will it be? It's not finished.
It's not finished, right?
Storage?
Yes, for storage and utilities.
For the entire foundation?
At this point, a little bit of that is, is undetermined, but we, we have a stare ability to go down there, and, but it, well, it's...
On your calc sheet, the proposed driveways other includes that walkway. Didn't I see new walkway?
That's right.
Which one, this one?
Uh, no, I'm looking at the sheet, the package.
Oh.
For, for the non-vegetated calculation?
Yeah.
Yes. Yes, we included a walkway four foot wide down to the water in crushed stone driveway.
Can you go to the plan page again?
Uh, which?
The house plan? You only had that on for a second, I didn't really see it.
As far as the deck that you're leaving, how far is that off the water?
Pretty close. Thirteen feet from the shore to the camp, so it's closer than that.
And how many trees are coming out for the...
There's, uh, he's got a proposed one in, in this, in this packet here.
Let's squirrel Arbor Care come down and survey the property with the plan, where the house is gonna go, and make a map of trees will be removed.
You okay with the tree?
I haven't even, uh, gone over that yet. It's, um, this is, uh, for, um, greatest practical extent, and I'll deal with the trees and revegetation. If you guys approve it, then we'll have to figure it all out. But revegetation will a hundred percent be, you know, put back in, because they have, just have to. There's, there's no way around it.
The camp you, the camp you're ripping down, are you cutting any of those trees around that, down? The camp that you're ripping down, are you cutting any of those trees that are surrounding that, or...
I don't believe he called those out.
Okay.
We're in a needs, you know, it's gonna be probably taken down with a, you know, a small excavator and hauled off in as non-obtrusive ways as we can.
You're keeping the boat ram?
Silly question.
Well, you never know where the shot... On the two-story, what was the roof you leaned toward the end?
We were leaning towards a ridge running this way. And then a shit, and then a slope coming down here, and then a larger slope coming down here. Trying to get that water on the backside of this area.
Yeah, gutter, a gutter on this side of it.
On this side here?
Yes.
Gutter and drip line.
There were cars in the, in the other, so that would be the driveway here, right there.
It's right away?
Yeah.
Yes.
But, I mean, as far as parking the cars...
Is right in here.
Right in there.
Crushed stone. And then proposing this retaining wall here as an edge to, you know, define that, so that water doesn't run in places we don't want it to, as well as this can be a planted area. It's just gonna be better for filtration.
What do you guys think about a sidewalk?
Never a bad idea.
But Gavin's not here.
It's not a bad idea.
Any questions that I can address for... What are you thinking?
They have a bunch of boxes. See if I can find them. Had sent me a hand. I only have a couple of them.
That's right, you were scrolling through it in one of those, in one of those...
Yeah, I had one with a bunch of different photos on it. Uh, just give me a second, if I come up with the right one. This one's not loading fully. Yeah, 'cause I got a lot more pictures in your photo. But for some reason, it's not, hasn't loaded all of it. I guess that's gonna be it.
That's the right-of-way on the left?
Correct.
And so garage was thirty-five feet or something?
Yeah, thirty-four and a half feet. From the center line of this right-of-way.
I'm just gonna lighten up my screen for you guys, 'cause it's lighter on my computer than it is up there.
What is that?
What are these ribbons?
Those are the trees that they're slated to cut down. This is over in the area that's where that one-story volume's gonna be. So this is the living room, essentially.
The drainage and the, um, there was drainage on the right, looking from the right-of-way. There was more drainage on the left, is that...
Correct, yes, it comes into this area here.
And you're gonna plant that area as well?
That's right.
That's coming down the right-of-way. So that's the only existing house in, as it right there. And there's another camp on the other s...
New road.
Yeah, it's...
Yeah, the right-of-way is, is, yeah, this is another road, right, going to... So they bought this kind of portion of the property here, but this road is a new road that was cut in for another house, I think. It's going here.
Right way is on the left.
Somewhere right in here. Like it connects.
And that's the garage?
Yes.
You guys making a decision to do a sidewalk? Is that what you're thinking?
I would like to do, I'd like to make a motion to do a sidewalk. That way Gavin could be here. It's, it, I think, the pictures are great, but being there and seeing what you're talking about is a whole different, you know, we can make a better assessment.
I'll say, as we were developing the location of this house, and kind of the shape of it, and one-story, two-stories, we were trying to obviously work within those hundred-foot setbacks and the thirty-four and a half, trying to push as much, um, volume and space behind that line, and keeping that, that low space, that living room, keeping that as low as we could, because, you know, that's another thing that, that forested edge on the water, trying to keep that volume as low as we could. But, obviously getting that area that we want for living, for people.
Well, I, I never think it's a bad idea to do a sidewalk. I think, um, you've done a thorough job, and it's, um, it, to me, it would be helpful to see those runoff areas and, and the lot itself. Um, and we do have a member missing. It would be good for him to see it as well. Um, so I'll second.
All in favor? So we'll schedule a sidewalk?
And so, can you tell me the process of, that you guys go through in that sidewalk is?
Uh, we just, just kind of look at where, like, where we wanna see is where the runoffs are that he's talking, John's talking about.
Yeah, we'll have the plan, so we can walk it. We'll see the trees that, you know, have to come out, um...
Do you have the house staked out? Do you have it?
We have some stakes, but not entirely staked out, no.
That would be helpful.
He has all the trees flagged out that are, that are proposed to be coming down? Trees are flagged out there, yes.
You wanted to do it before the sixteenth?
Definitely. Um, Adam, I, I just, uh, wanted to kind of fill in. Back in two thousand and nineteen, we had a proposed thirty percent expansion off the left of the camp. You guys wanted to relocate the camp. So we hired the Leno architecture. Um, and we've been saving for the past couple of years to do this relocation. Um, you came out to the site, did a sidewalk, and looked at the property, so, um, I just think we're kind of...
Just to fill you in, it was a whole different board.
Yeah.
So, we've kind of restarted, starting over from scratch, kind of in an odd way, an odd sense, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
So we haven't seen it.
All right.
To be, to be...
But Gavin was part of that, and, um, you know, I just, you know, we're looking to, to get started, um, you know, with the construction and everything, so... I just wanted to kind of fill in that, that history, and, um, kind of see if there's any record of that sidewalk that we can pull up, um, just expedite everything.
Anything like that handy?
I don't even know if they, did they...
I don't think we have that.
I don't know if they did, they videoed them back then. Other than that, it was just people showing up on site, and...
All right.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Can we schedule it before the next, get it done before the next meeting?
Ten.
Ten.
You're all set.
Ten.
If you do it now.
So if you announce it now, we could do it before meeting? And have them on the agenda for the sixteenth?
So if I understand it, there's a sidewalk that you schedule, and, you know, whenever that, that works out. And then there's a, another meeting that we come to find your, or hear your findings, or discuss it again, is that...
Yeah, we go, we go through and get to the formal approval after the sidewalk.
Okay. But that requires another, another meeting here to...
On the sixteenth.
It'll be the same day as the sidewalk.
If we can get the schedule out for, ask the girl ten days prior, to let the public know and stuff like that, for the sidewalk.
Are you gonna contact us when, when you're gonna do the sidewalk?
Uh, no, we're gonna schedule it right now.
How do we know when to help?
We're gonna tell you right now.
In about two minutes, you'll know.
Right. When do you guys... We have to wait ten, ten days, so...
Well, if we did it right before the next...
Before the next meeting, and then you're on the agenda for the next meeting, we can work it out. Exactly, go right from the sidewalk to here.
Go out there an hour ahead of time.
The day before.
Like we did them.
Or you want, you want to do it on the day?
That's what we usually do.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can schedule it for the sixteenth.
Five o'clock?
At five, if it works for everybody, and then we'll just come right here after.
Does that work?
Same thing.
Same thing. That way they can come up and come to the meeting and the sidewalk.
Fresh on our brains. Alright. Moving forward to ag corn storage, Pat Stevens, seven eighty Milton Mills Road, lot two four zero dash zero one four, site plan review.
Hello, ready? Pat Stevens, how we doing?
Good, how you doing?
And you?
Good.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
So if you just wanna give us a overview of your project that you wanna get done?
Yep, uh, looking to put in, uh, midi storage.
How many, uh, units?
Uh...
Or storage units?
Yeah, the one building, uh, approximately thirty by a hundred and thirty. And as a, uh... If flip another page, you do, I think, there's, uh, shows the units, makeup of it.
What is... I'm just maybe for you, Jason, what's the, uh, land use chart paragraph that says this is a go in rural?
Say again?
What, what land use chart page, paragraph, two point seven?
For, for, uh, storage?
Yeah.
Is there an extra one of those? I didn't get one.
What?
What are you looking at?
Oh, the plane, were you here last week?
No, she wasn't.
Actually, we'll grab you, as well as myself, please.
Yeah, but...
So, storage, John, are you looking for the page it's on?
Yeah, just the paragraph. Yeah, you know, the two seven three one.
Yeah.
So I'm sorry, but where are we on Milton Mills Road?
Uh...
Right at the beginning.
You know where...
Off in Loop, off in Loop?
Yeah. Almost Heath Brook, right? You're budding Heath Brook.
Yes. Yep.
So a little bit of history, we were here about two years ago, just when the board turnover started to happen, with the two lot subdivision that was previously approved by the board here, you can see lot one and lot two on the map.
Yep.
That was a planning board project that was approved, that we brought forth for Mr. Stevens back at that point. So a lot of like the fifty-foot buffer on the road, some of the other conditions, like you'll see on the driveway, that's the green there, says it's going to be allowed to return to its natural state. Once it's, um... You know, once the new driveway is in, those are all stipulations and leftover pieces from the previous, um, approval that happened on these two lots.
Is that where the road was, where the boat was left out there?
Yes.
That's gonna be returned to natural state?
Yeah. Got my boat.
Was it your boat?
Oh, I thought someone got it. No, no, it got dumped, yeah, but I guess it's mine.
Yeah. Looked like a nice boat from the road.
Yeah, a few holes in it. Bullet holes.
You saying bullet holes?
Yeah.
So is that your target?
We're rough on Milton Mills Road.
I'm looking for it, John, I'm just, uh, there with me, I'm sorry. For some reason, I'm not coming up, something that just...
Say it again?
I think there was one, wasn't there?
I couldn't find it, that's why I asked the question. And in fact, if you look at two seven three J, it actually says "not authorized" in the rural.
Seven. Oh, does it turn the page?
Yeah, uh, oop. Nope, that's not it.
I'm just looking at the land use chart.
Yeah, I didn't actually, there's nothing in there for storage.
Right.
I thought I was gonna get that, sorry. I have it on silent, but that doesn't go on silent.
Was it in the city rural, right?
It's in the rural district, right?
Yeah, I'm just kind of going through... So the... Brings me to fifty-four, so commercial industrial ground, or a spring extraction and/or storage, but that's not really what I'm looking for. This is the only thing that I'm coming up with for storage in the land use chart. Just doing a quick, quick search for it, you know what I mean?
Yeah, I mean, we actually proposed a year or two ago to add storage above twenty-five hundred square feet. Town meeting voted it down.
Right.
And so I was looking hard to find something that authorizes this, but...
Where is that other one up on Fox's Ridge? That, that's the applicant's, that's a critical rule, right?
That's OKM, but it's, that was zoned, uh...
Oh, is that zoned commercial?
Yeah.
Transit?
Cause of herd lumber.
Yep.
That was the only section up in that, it's like a little blimp.
Yeah, I'm not aware of the whole, that got shot down and...
Yeah, we worked hard on that.
We did.
Yes, I don't have my land use chart, I mean, we went around and around, we talked a couple of years ago about this, and we had recommended it, we kept everything with our square footage, then we were
This is twenty-five hundred?
Okay, under one of those uses, but I can't remember which.
It was under anything?
It's twenty-five hundred, so if the building was under twenty-five hundred square feet, you could do a conditional.
And I stand corrected, it's mixed use over by herd lumber?
Yeah, which is, let's see. Page fifteen, Joe. This is running thirty-nine. J, J is the one that prohibits I, um, you could do if it's twenty-five hundred or less. And it wouldn't be a site plan, it'd be a conditional review.
Could you reduce the size to twenty-five hundred and still do what you wanna do?
What is your size right now?
It's running at thirty-nine hundred now.
Just doing that calculation, if that's where we're landing at, if you ask me, probably the next reasonable would be either eighty or eighty-two feet long, if you want to build an MBS stuff like that.
But that leaves you no room for expansion if you wanted to come back later, right? Is that how that works, what we're talking about? So if he's proposing one unit right now, but then maybe one or more later?
Potentially.
Yeah. Help us have the law changed. I said, "Help us have the law changed, try to convince people." I don't understand why it was voted down.
I don't...
It's just grammatic error.
So I guess my question would be, I know there's, uh... I don't have my, I can pull it up, my land use, on my zoning thing, but, it's right here. Young's, the storage units on Young's Ridge Road, right next to the Martella Estates.
Right.
So how do those get allowed?
I don't know, it's before my time.
Well, I'm just, I'm just kind of curious. Just asking questions out loud, maybe I shouldn't be. Because that's all, that's, that's rule, that's a hundred percent rule up in that area.
Is it? I think it's less than twenty-five hundred.
They got like three, two or three buildings there. Tucked behind their house. I drove by, and that's kind of, just, I was just curious how that was allowed.
Probably did it when you didn't have the CEO, no, I had no idea.
It's been there for some time.
Yeah, it's been there for a while.
And there's a couple buildings there, right, it's not just one? Or is it just one?
Just one.
Oh, it is just one, I thought it was a couple.
Yeah.
Alright, my apologies. But even, even that, I'm just saying it's...
Is it under this twenty-five hundred? You have to...
I don't know, I haven't been out there with my tape measure.
Something to check on.
I can't remember exactly.
You have a job for you.
Yeah.
I did some hard work there, 'cause it's...
It was put in the eighties, right?
It's your brother?
Stepbrother, yeah.
It was in the eighties, wasn't it, or later?
No, it was about twenty years ago. Approximately.
Guess I'll look back twenty years, and the record's there.
That might have been a different rule then, too. Twenty years.
Twenty years ago, you had different zoning.
Yeah.
Why did they, I know, this is just a side, why did they, at the town meeting, why did it not get passed?
I don't remember.
Grammatical errors.
Back at, look.
It wasn't, they wouldn't, and you guys didn't come back to it?
I don't know.
You just kind of messing around? With the grammatical errors, I know there's some things that got shot down for grammatical errors, but...
Right.
I think you guys were using it.
I don't know why that got shut down, to be honest, you were there, weren't you?
If I was, I had only been in the job for like two days, and I probably liked everything in one ear and out the other.
Can't remember why it got shot down.
I don't know, I remember working on it.
I know we had proposed up to five thousand square feet.
Yep.
But I can't remember now. There were, there were several of them that, you know, we had a line through a thing that didn't need it, and that may have been one of those. But, you know, the... If you, if you can reduce the size of the building, you know, it then becomes a conditional review, which isn't quite as onerous as the site plan review. Small comfort, I know.
But then they can't put another building up.
No.
No.
That's the problem.
As of right now.
Right.
Honestly, you know, if, if he, you know, if that ends up being an interpretation, if he were comfortable with that smaller building, I mean, my strategy there would be, if you want another building, we have enough road frontage and enough acreage to do another lot there. Probably try to break off one more lot, come back with one on each, if he decided to expand.
There you go.
From what I'm hearing at this point, that would probably be our strategy, and if he wanted to go for a second building.
I see being picked up on the mic.
Is that gonna speak somebody's name?
Probably, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, you have a four-five hundred feet road frontage outside of the outside of the research protection, and there's over nine and a half acres of land outside of the research protection, that's a two-acre zone, so that would probably be in the direction that went, if we were shooting for a second building, based on what occurred.
Joe, what is the size of this building that you've got on here right now?
Right now, it's thirty, thirty by one twenty, as well, if he wanted to propose.
Thirty-nine hundred.
So five, maybe five twenty-five hundred by thirty foot length, it gets, comes out of just over eighty feet, so realistically, it'd probably be eighty or eighty-two. Could get him under that twenty-five, and size of it, so you're gonna need another third, you have to be like third, you have to, maybe two by thirty, we can still... What they're saying is it'd be a slightly different application, so less intense.
Yeah. So you, yeah, you have, so... You've broken off one, one lot right now, and you have, it's just a two or a three lot subdivision?
Just the two lots.
There was one lot broken off there, and four, you know, four weeks ago.
Where the for sale sign is?
Yes, yeah.
Uh, would have been Kelly's, but...
Yeah, 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 he sold it last month.
Okay.
So when was it subdivided?
Yeah, that's where I was looking.
It's been five years?
Hi, no, definitely hasn't happened.
No, it's been two.
Get where you're going on that one.
I don't wanna go there.
I knew where you were going on that one. Didn't know it would work.
No, I'm not, somebody else can go there.
Well, we don't wanna waste his time.
No.
Yeah, at this point, it's partly about the process, and I guess if that's gonna be our limitation, with the five hundred square feet, we'll have to discuss it, if that's worth it. Assuming that it is, still we're moving forward, then, yeah, we still do have some options, and we still wanna discuss his concept, his ideas, taking care of the drainage off the building there, on the downslope side of it. You know, 'cause again, we, he still owns lot one there, next door, too. You know, I think this was more of an experiment, one building, to see how it went, and then if it didn't go well, that would be that, if it started to go well, we wanted to have options, but, you know, there's he does own a second lot next door, there is the potential for a third lot even between the two locations, so I think, you know, we would still have the opportunity to do some similar projects on side-by-side lots, if that ended up being the direction everything wanted to head.
The only thing I'd say, Joe, is we, we, me personally, I need to review the subdivision rules.
Absolutely.
To make sure... To make sure that's all copasthetic.
Yep.
Sounds good, but, you know, timeframes and other limitations, I'm not... I don't have those in the tip of my tongue.
Yeah, well, any... It even says, as we know from the original plan, any modification to these lots, lot two, lot one, whether that happens today or ten years, twenty years from now, any modification of those two lots has to come back to you. That other Kelly lot came out, and all had been more spied, and coached, and... So that Kelly lot isn't in the picture, but any additional lots, any modifications to these two lots is subject to your review, stipulation of the last... The last approval. And it is on record subdivision. But, I mean, we're getting ahead of ourselves with that a little bit, I don't... If he has any intention at all right now, trying to move on.
Can you find those when he first came back? Was it two years ago?
Yeah.
I will look into it.
I mean, not today, obviously, but...
I think in the packets, I included an eleven-by-seventeen copy of the subdivision plan that was reported. I think it would be the last page.
Yeah, that was different from this, I was wondering about.
Right, that was the previously approved subdivision plan.
Yeah. Eighteen-twenty-twenty.
Just missed the commercial zone. Yeah, you needed... So do they... Do they allow it in the commercial zone, or they don't really want it at all when it came to the storage units? Because if it's not in the land use chart, how does that... How does this... When we were talking about rule and critical rule and...
If they run at twenty-five-hundred, it was okay. In various zones.
Right.
Well, even in rural, it's okay with a conditional review.
Under twenty-five-hundred?
Yeah.
But anything greater, it's not... They were saying it's not allowed.
I couldn't... I was looking to find a way, but I couldn't find anything.
You're asking me a trick question.
Well...
No, I...
I didn't want you to say, "You dummy," that's on...
No, 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 no. Well, I already stumped myself once tonight, when I got stuck on my own tongue, so...
So as it stands right now, there's...
As of...
He's just limited to twenty-five-hundred square feet. According to land use chart, right?
Yep.
Yeah.
That's it.
If he could find a work around that, I mean, with that figure. If you can work with that figure, um... Then there's still a... Still has a view process. So this one here is the one where it's back in the day, looks like.
Yeah, twenty-two years ago.
Yeah. Back in the day, that. Yeah.
Well, I think where we're at...
Using this as a magnifying glass, if you're wondering what's going on.
So, yeah, in some ways, Pat, we have a decision to make. If you feel like eighty-two feet, like, is going to be something you would entertain, then I would consider, you know, at least, until we find, you know, some other avenues. I don't think we're going to land it, they don't think we're doing more than eighty-two feet on that level. So if you think that you might be comfortable with that, then maybe we want to continue the discussions about the drainage, the entrance, maybe site lock, that sort of thing. But if eighty-two feet doesn't kick in the stomach, and you're not willing to be worth it, then you might want to stop and think about it.
They put you at twenty... Just under twenty-five-hundred square feet is eighty-two. Thirty by eighty-two is... Yeah. Thirty by eighty-two puts you at twenty-four-sixty.
A wall is a wall. How many units would that give you?
Uh, yeah, I'm not sure what the unit makeup would be, with the eight feet.
Well, that's why I was saying, you get a wall in between each one. I mean, I know there just can be sheets all the way.
Yeah.
Double-sided, units on both sides, and down.
And over there, ten by tens.
They say sixteen units.
Six footers, eight footers, ten footers.
Ten, twelve feet?
Ten, most of them are all ten.
Ten wide?
Yes. Standing. And then you have to make, you know, like, five by tens and ten by tens.
It's thirty feet. And if we're west on that sort of building, would they do like a twenty-four by a hundred or something like that, potentially?
I think they probably would.
Does that make more sense?
It's a tough situation right now.
I don't want to... That's it. Yeah, or if we wanted to go with the second building, we would have to probably come back and try to create another lot, something like that.
Yeah, and you can't count on the future. I mean, I know these guys tried changing it once, but you can't count on it being changed again.
Right.
You know what I mean?
Yeah.
Plan for what you have now, and you never know what the future can bring.
Going to push it on to get it back on the town meeting agenda.
Well, it won't happen this year.
It's a year away, anyway.
We worked on something all year long, only to see everything yet. Sold it down.
First time I've heard that either.
It took all year to put it together. Oh, yeah? Extra time, we came in extra time.
That's because it doesn't have a stream.
We started whispering about all this couple of years, and then we...
The final left lot does. But this lot, this particular lot, doesn't. But they were looking at the whole thing back then.
Jason, can you bring up the lot again? With the stream and everything?
Uh, his actual plan?
I guess, yeah.
Yeah, he was...
Yeah, but that's a number...
Yeah, that was the Arco for District we were looking at.
Or maybe it's all the same.
The other one that you just had up there with the blue lines.
Let me, um...
Yeah, but he just had one... There it is.
So what that was back when we did it, we had to map the edge of that wetland. And that particular wetland associated with that brook had a two-hundred-fifty square feet resource protection around it. Come the edge of the wetland, not from the brook.
Second lot, doesn't it, but...
I don't understand.
Yeah, he's saying he can do it.
I know, but I was reading his future thing, it refers to something. And it doesn't make sense to me.
Can you ask the question? What are you reading?
That's in the subdivision thing, it refers... Let me get my magnifying glass out.
Well, I think if they were going to do something...
Holy... Forget this.
Some future subdivision, then they had to be mindful of that stream. I think that's essentially what it's saying. They approved that subdivision.
Right.
And then in the future, they're going to do something, they had to be mindful of the...
Yeah, but you can't build in there anyways.
Right, I think that's all it's saying.
So on your few... On your notes?
Yeah.
Hold on, let me find it.
Number five?
Number fourteen.
Fourteen.
Can you read it?
It says, "Per ten point one point B point three of the current acting subdivision regulations, any future division or revision of the properties shown hereon shall constitute a revision to the plan and shall require approval from the board." I was reading five, four point two, point two, point six dimensional requirements. No portion of any lot created after the effective date of adoption or amendment of this ordinance and lying within the Resource Protection District may be used to meet the dimensional requirements of other districts in which the remainder of the lot is situated.
But then the one that you just read out of fourteen, it states on ten-one-B-three, if a lot on one side of the stream is defined in BAP minimums, rolling in zoning guidelines...
All right.
Uh, subdivision regulations.
Oh, okay.
Title water or road fails to meet minimum requirements for a lot size. It may not be combined with a lot on the other side of the stream. Title water or road to meet minimum lot size.
It is not.
You have two different things at play there. One of the two things you read is... Well, that's actually three. The, uh, the note fourteen that we're referring to, future plan revisions, that's just emphasizing, if we change these lots in any way, any configuration, I'll have to come back and see you guys. The part you're reading about land on the other side of the stream, what that's trying to get at is, you know, if you're looking at the map on the screen there, let's say we own an acre on the other side of the stream.
Right.
Um, you know, it's... We have that barrier between us. It's saying we can't use the land on the other side of the stream to meet minimum requirements on the side where we're working.
All right.
So you can't... You have to... We would have to have two acres on the side of the stream where we want to be. And then additionally, the third thing that we're talking about is basically, anything in the Resource Protection, we can't use to meet our minimum lot size either. In this case, there's about nine acres of land here down either the wetland area or two-hundred-fifty feet from it. There's about nine acres there that we cannot use to meet any land area requirements, you know, our two-acre minimums on site.
You're talking this right here?
Right.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, there's about nine acres there that per all those different things you've read, they... We can't use it. We would... If we were going to incorporate that into the lot, the lot would have to have at least eleven acres. Two good acres, if you want to call it that, and then the nine that are protected.
But having said that, you can still put up two buildings with that option, lot one and lot two.
So you could get five thousand instead of thirty-nine-hundred.
Right, about two different lots.
Yeah, yeah.
We're already improving your number, just with two buildings.
Well, he's probably seeing that as well, now I have my sixty-thousand-dollar lot, I can't sell it.
This is like that other one up the road, kind of situation.
I don't want to go there with this one.
Well, no, but in an odd way.
No, I mean, this is... I think both he and I were... Are kind of shocked to hear the twenty-five-hundred square foot beating in that land use state right now. And that, when we had started all discussing it, Ken was telling us, wait a few months, this will be easier, wait a few months. He probably thought, whatever you guys are proposing.
That's exactly right.
Go through.
Right.
Doesn't sound like that.
No, so it didn't get any easier.
Yeah.
Wait a few months.
Yeah. Promise is promise.
I'm just messing around.
Yeah, I know, I would be another year.
I didn't realize that it was this... I didn't dig into it like that. I apologize, guys, I would have kind of let you guys know right off the bat. You can blame... Put that one on me. I was using Joe as my crutch.
So both of you understand? So Pat's in the clear, isn't it?
Yeah, that's fine. Blame it on me.
You know, what I... What we have, if we went there, you still have...
There's enough acres.
And you bring up the... It says lot one and lot two.
So, please.
They're both right here.
What had happened before?
The other one.
And what we went through?
The building was...
What's wrong? What we approved?
What's he talking about?
With Joe. Was the white...
With what, this?
The white?
Or is this connected to this?
Had to do with the dates of the transfer.
You're talking this right now, or you're talking this?
That's all one lot. That's lot two, see at the top?
Who owns the lot?
Lot two, lot...
Lot one's right here.
No, lot one's over there, right?
Gavin was saying, everybody knows.
That's all one lot.
That one...
Oh, okay.
So he was gonna...
I don't want to... I don't want to go there again, but if you're going to look into it, just...
What is that, the green dotted line?
We'd have to make sure it comes down.
Oh, what's the green dotted line?
I don't think Bernie understood.
The green dotted line is...
It was Bernie's word.
Wetland edge.
Okay. Okay.
And that's why he's got the arrows coming down. That was one of the things I asked him to put on here, was stormwater distribution.
Right, we would have...
All right, so this is all wetland edge?
Yeah.
So even though he's got a big lot, there isn't a lot of building space on it. Oh, it's that. Yeah, so there's not a lot. I was reading it from him. I saw the max in the clearing, as a... Big end of the mic, thinking, there's three pieces there. If that's the case, then him subdividing that wouldn't make any difference anyway, right? You know, because then most of it would be in a wetland area. I mean, if he split it right in half, the right side of it is mostly wetland anyway. That's what they were talking about. Where is that lot, nine point six acres? Subdivision lot. Yeah, he actually goes a lot of the way, but... Yeah, I mean, goes on a little bit, I think, on the side of the brook. Oh, I see.
Well, gentlemen, would you like to... Would you like to go with that?
It's got a lot of boundaries here.
Right. Go back to playing board?
Well, right here.
I'm talking about their plan. Talking about their plan.
Think tank.
Yeah, it slows your return down.
How many units were you going to have in the original building?
I think it would be thirty-two.
It's in this packet, I think.
Why didn't you use my magnifying glass on that one?
No, this one's big print for you, bud.
I didn't get that one.
You didn't get the map?
No, I didn't. Oh, yeah, I did.
Thirty by one thirty, eight and a half feet high.
I got the map.
Twelve, twelve, twelve four by seven and twenty-two nine by seven. No, those are the doors, so...
Even a ten by ten takes more than ten feet. Even if it's eighty feet, you're not gonna get ten units, you're gonna get nine.
About twenty-four total.
Well, yeah, if it's twenty-four wired, then you get on either side, eighteen total units. Because you chew up space between the doors. Business end of it, I guess.
We want, these guys are kind of just saying, every, we're running out of people.
I brought some crackers.
Just trying to regroup and rethink and... What'd you do with, did you take them all? I didn't know. Oh, that's right, you only had two.
I wanted to do the ZI.
It's a different thing. No, but it shows the...
So Mike remembers to drop this off, more or less for, we wanted to make, like you guys were doing, to make sure that was something that was, that was good enough, because obviously we do it. So, he said it's all the scale. Conditions were on the bottom, things worked on.
He wanted more, just, he wanted a kind of a heads up before he came in the next time with, with the applicant. That's just a, he printed one on mistake, double sided.
Yeah, that's, that looks good. It's me. Anybody else have an opinion? Anybody else?
This is important.
Oh, right, right.
Okay.
Because he doesn't have, he was doing it himself, so...
So I...
He wanted to make sure if anything needed to be changed or amended, if that could be revised.
So, any questions? On the twenty-five hundred feet, or is it gonna be exactly at twenty-five hundred feet?
I think it says twenty-five hundred or, or less.
Twenty-five hundred or less?
A little less, yeah. Yeah, because the next one is twenty-five hundred or...
Good question.
Sounds like it pops up. It's like clicks. Because it all...
Less than, less than twenty-five, so twenty-four ninety-nine.
Right, so you might want to film the Ask them on this one.
That's why exactly the eighty-two feet, because it's two twenty, twenty-four hundred and sixty.
Two sided.
That's why he's a twenty-three thirty.
That's pretty good.
Right, and then he was going eight twenty, thirty by eighty-two is, is two thousand four sixty.
Yeah, I think, um, you have the survey he did for the property on file, right?
I'll have to, yeah, I believe so.
I think he said that, that when he first came in. So I'd be comfortable with this as long as we had that on file, because the review...
Put them together.
Yeah, that would, that would be better. The review says we should have a dated, certified, primitive.
Right, right, right.
So if he has that on file for that property, then this coupled with that, I think, would be my, my...
Yeah, I just wanted to throw it in front of you guys and while these guys are talking, I figured it was a good time to...
Yeah.
To look at it, review it.
Yeah.
Conditions are good. Uh, and I think on that one, I have the side and rear.
Yeah.
And, and that was...
Yeah, and the minutes set a condition about the waste, though. It wasn't a condition, we just wanted to...
Oh, I thought, I thought that was a condition that you guys wanted to have.
But we just want to make sure we're getting rid of that.
Yeah.
Getting rid of it.
And, and it's not on there.
Like, whatever I, yeah, whatever I typed in on that was what I had jotted down from the meeting. So I, I wrote that out, sent it to Mike, and he said he copied and pasted it and put it on there.
I think that's, to me, I, I think that meets, as long as we have that other one for his property, I think that's good.
Can you make sure you go down to, to grab that other plan from his file?
I know what I was gonna say. What transmission? That's about...
It's the same thing as Antifreeze. That's, that's the same type of...
Got a hazardous waste disposal contract. His neighbor's burning his oil. And gentlemen.
So, we have that town meeting sixteenth too, right?
No, that's the eighteenth.
That's the eighteenth, the Saturday.
Of July?
Of June.
June?
Town meeting is the eighteenth Saturday.
Origin is the twelfth.
Election on the fourteenth, which is Tuesday.
Yep.
And we have a planning board meeting the sixteenth.
Yeah, I'm talking, didn't we have to have a public hearing?
Public hearing.
Is that day?
That's for John, for the sixteenth, yeah.
Yeah, so we'll do the site walk, the public hearing.
Be busy.
Then these two got the previous one, and this one will be on the agenda at a minimum.
Yeah, um, and I had another guy that's trying to get on there too. I gotta figure out what to do, because, uh, I didn't, yeah, now we got more on there.
We've spent much time in a day.
You didn't put in your application, you just got bumped.
We're bumping everybody.
Oh, shoot.
We said it all ready to go. We just need to go measure the, the height on the existing building so we can fill up at thirty percent.
Yeah, I have a conditional use application that, um, a gentleman with a bridge wanted, he's been trying to get in.
A bridge?
Or crossing, or steam, stream cross, he, he had a...
We grew it up.
Yeah. You can be on it if you want to. You're, you're an active resident, aren't you?
No. Black and white, don't know.
Anyway, what do you guys want to do?
Uh, we are hoping to come back in and speak to you guys in two weeks. So a slightly modified version of this building, and we'll probably shift the location to the, to the east a little bit.
Close to the property line?
Yeah. Close to where it would make sense if we ever did try to pursue a second building. But the general concept would, would stay the same, same driveway location that's already at the location that DOT approved for our entrance permits, um, back when we went through the process two years ago. So, same general concept that you see there, um, just shorter building to meet that requirement that we brought up this evening. And, you know, we'll probably reach out to the manufacturer, you know, in the next couple of days, just to figure out if thirty by eighty-two was best, or a hundred by twenty-four, or what, what makes sense, um, in their, you know, expertise, given this, this limitation of what they, you know, would be the most advantageous layout for the building. That would be our hope, is to be able to come back in and continue the discussion in, in two weeks. And then if we're on the same page, we could talk about site ops and things like that.
Do you have hours of operation, or?
Um, we had hours of operation. We talked about it.
Daylight hours.
Daylight only?
Yeah.
Okay.
And that's what all the, the other ones that are in town are.
Right.
Is this gonna be gated, or is it just gonna be, okay?
Yeah, but his, his plan even wasn't to save the power to the building. More just be a shallow with a couple, um, solar powered security lights on the building corners that would be motion activated. So if there was any activity out there, they'd come on, but otherwise, there wouldn't be any light shining out there during dark hours, off hours. But we're happy to set.
From a rapid season.
On those daylight hours as the process, you know, moves forward quickly here.
Also, it's probably clear already, but what you're going to store, what you're going to allow to be stored, would have to be on the plan, right?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean...
It's not like motor vehicles or things like that.
If, if there's, if there's state, sort of, if there's prohibited items, let's say, kind of get that under...
Engines, motors.
Yeah, it brings in another realm of whether you've got a padded site or an un padded site. If you've got motor vehicles and possible hazardous waste, and, you know, all that kind of stuff. If it's just general storage for household goods, something like that.
Yeah.
And if you are, then you're into the conditional use review as well, which is a little less onerous.
Yep. All right, well, yeah, we'll, we'll regroup, we'll make a few slight modifications, we'll try to get that into the J, let's say, by Monday, and, uh, try to keep, keep the process moving forward here.
You're just gonna modify the, the, this thing, though, not much more than this, well, you're gonna have to change some of the packet up a little bit, but...
Yeah, we may, we may have two or three sheets on the application, we may have to submit initial use versus what we submit now. Otherwise, the plan will look very similar, just with a smaller building, maybe shift a little bit to the right. Ninety-five percent of that plan would change.
Yeah, yeah, package application just reviewed, yes. You're all set, are you?
I'm all set. Just get up some notes, we're missing some things. Sorry, guys. All right, we appreciate your time.
All right, thank you.
We'll be back. Yeah, soon.
All right.
Have a good night.
Yeah, thank you.
Do you want this plan back?
Um, sure, fine, if you don't need it, you can get one back.
I got one in here, thank you.
Yeah?
Need further discussion?
It's the time of the night.
Your cue.
Man, I don't think we gotta...
I don't know her.
We don't have to read over the pending projects, anything happening with...
No, I just gotta really try to figure out what we're gonna do with the next, next agenda.
Stacking up?
Things are starting to pile up. I gotta really try to...
Yep, there is.
Well, Camp Keisha, Kidder is not...
Kid, Camp Kidder is not, East Shore Drive is not coming in. Pepin, I have not heard from him. He, nobody's coming in. OKM, same thing. All the pending projects are just...
Pending.
Pending, um, we got a site walk, uh, for the, we just set tonight, and Joe's gonna come back in.
Sixteenth, is that what it was?
Yeah, sixteenth at five o'clock.
We'll get a review.
Iron Tails, they were supposed to be here tonight. Uh, couldn't get the, he couldn't get his survey company to provide them with the documentation. And then we have a public hearing
Yeah.
For Jonathan Canyon. And that goes all well, and then review the conditions. And then I also had a guy who's been, I've been having conversations with who came in. But I, yeah.
So we pushing Iron Tails out to the next meeting?
Well, I have to. I don't have a site, I don't have a plan, we don't have a plan to review. I have to push him off, and I don't want him stretching it, keep on stretching it out. He should have, that should have been done.
Yeah, it's been going off for a...
It should have been done eleven months ago, within eleven months ago, so...
This golf is...
He came in here, uh, for a preliminary, just wanted to see what you guys wanted from him, and it was just kind of an introduction. I don't, I have not heard from him since.
Right, he had to get into the site plan review.
He, site plan review, he didn't even have, uh, he still had to go to the bank for financing. He still had all kinds of stuff, so I don't even know if it's a, if it's a go, um...
I know he's been in there working.
Yeah, I've seen some trees, you know, get cut down here and there, but, um, I, I can have, uh, I mean, just so it's not on our agenda, find out if we should just remove it or keep it, or, you know, stuff like that.
Well, certainly the conditional use should come above, because it was gonna have to be a site plan review.
Could rock. You're right. Thank you. Um, so I... So we'll remove that one for now, and when he does come back in, we'll put him back on the agenda.
OKM, I mean...
OKM, he was doing some, he had to go, he came back, because before he went to the engineers, he wanted to get a preliminary approval, I believe is what it was, wasn't it? Or was...
We're worried about the...
We don't give preliminary.
Well, you know, well, I know what you mean.
He had a square footage issue too, and I remember specifically saying to them that, well, you know, after the town hall, you might not have a problem, but he'll have the same problem, is my recollection.
He's a mixed use.
Yeah, he's, that's what I was just talking with Chris earlier about, because I was like, how did he, how is he getting?
I thought it was commercial, but it's mixed use. Because it's, uh...
Which is still commercial, which still has, mixed use is still a commercial zone.
Right. Oh, yeah. But there was, he was just more worried, there was one piece that, uh, this was a long time ago, it was Dennis and I were talking. Gavin, I think you know about the little...
Yeah, well, he had something to do with resource protection and wetlands and stuff like that. He had to shift his building a certain way.
We were talking about him taking a building from the far back and moving it to the right hand side, get away from the...
Because of the brook.
The brook.
That was in the back.
So...
That should also be a site plan review.
So, we had it at the time.
Does that run some re, along the part, the old power snitch?
You actually did tell, we did talk to him about site plan review, I remember, because his buddy stood up.
Okay.
So that was, that was...
We know the frisbee guy, we did.
Yeah, no, OKM was, you guys did, um, tell him to go come back in for, uh, um, site plan review, and then... So we might have a little busy week next week. I'm gonna try to move things around. Some of the Iron Tail should be a quick one, hopefully. Uh, I don't, the site walk after, with the greatest practical extent, I don't, I don't know.
I think that should be a quick one.
Yeah, I mean, so some of these will be in and outs, you know, uh...
When's the town, town meeting?
It's on a Saturday.
I think I might be on vacation.
Are canceling your vacation. Mr. Chairman, you will be answering questions, Mr. Chairman.
Guess who's got it?
I'll have to check. I think I'll either leave that day or I leave the next day after.
Better be the next day.
Maybe the eighteenth.
I was specifically told, I'm not allowed to be on vacation that week, so...
Yeah, you paid yourself.
Covid.
Yeah, I'm sick.
All right.
Why cue the recorder?
I think it's your turn, Mr. Chairman.
A second.
All on paper.
A second.
Hello, where you going yet? Okay.
Welcome back.